I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. And we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd join us, please.
Sure.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the previous meeting's minutes for October 22nd. Has everybody read the minutes? Does anybody have any commentary, changes, corrections, edits to those minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Jen?
No.
Sandy?
Sandy.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Michelle. I'm going to jump in here before the public hearing quickly because I have Mr. Mills in the back, who is here because he has a lot line adjustment. And we've determined that we really don't need to have him here. We don't need an adjustment that the codes officer can handle it with advice of our attorney. So I'm going to just move that along and we'll, you can talk with Michelle and the building inspector to take care of that. And Jamie can advise on any questions he has.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I hate to have you wait.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Bronze Foundry Lots Public Hearing. I wanted to just do a little preface here of what the process is that we're going through so everybody understands that. The site, if you, I assume you all know where it is, but kind of behind Agway and runs from 370 to 31. It's currently zoned industrial, which allows for pretty much any type of enterprise, warehousing, manufacturing, commercial, retail, anything like that, with some restrictions from the Village Code. The applicant is seeking a zone change to a PDD, which is a planned development project, which actually allows for parameters that are tailored specifically to the site. The planning board is reviewing the project's site plan currently. And we're working on our seeker, which is the State Environmental Quality Act form, to check for environmental issues. And we'll make a determination on that and send a recommendation in favor or against to the village board, who will start their review on the project. The seeker determination includes traffic studies, which we've had two of, water and sewer capabilities and capacities, drainage, site constraints, and any other environmental concerns, just so you understand that part of it. The village board will review and ultimately vote on the zone change to the PDD, so it's in their hands after we're doing our review. The whole process will take several months before there's a final determination. And that's kind of an overview. So I would like to have a motion to open the public meeting, public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Johanna, can I have a second?
I'll second. Chris.
Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Unanimous, Michelle? So I would like to invite the applicant to speak about their project, please.
All right. Yeah. Steve Breitska, landscape architect with EDR. You have smaller, other than your 41 this time.
Good to see everyone tonight. Thank you for having us back here as we're getting toward the end of the year. The plan that I just handed out and the one that we have up on the screen hasn't changed from the last time we were here. But I'd like to walk through it for the benefit of everyone in the room attending tonight, just to see how we're planning to develop 16 acres here, as Terry mentioned, between Genesee Street and Salina Street. So just to orient you, north is to the top left of the plan here, Genesee Street on the left, and Salina Street there on the right side. As we've worked through this plan over the past number of years, actually, it's taken on different forms. This latest evolution was really brought to us as a conversation with the planning board. They charged us with one primary objective, which was to look at traffic and to limit the temptation of a cut through from Route 31 over to Salina Street. That was a critical component of how we would lay this out. And as we looked at that objective, it started to play well with the other features that we wanted to add to the site. We're looking to develop apartment buildings here, and the orientation and position of those helps us accomplish that objective of creating a walkable community here, just on the outside of the village. So just to walk us through, as you come in off of Genesee Street, we have a two-way access drive. As you approach the center of the site, throughout the entire site, we're looking at having a streetscape program. We would have two-way driveways throughout the entire site. They would be tree-lined. We would have sidewalks flanking both sides of that street. Again, focusing on the pedestrians throughout the entire development, limiting the focus on vehicles. So as you enter, we're adjusting the drive pattern through to, again, limit that cut through over to Salina Street. So we have positioned the buildings, some parallel to that travel, some perpendicular. But the goal is to break up the site and really provide a cohesive and consistent vehicular and pedestrian pattern throughout. So as you make your way in, you can see we have three buildings clustered here on the east side. All of the buildings are three stories. We have 270 units total across the site, two different style footprints. One is 36 units, that's a slightly smaller one here, and a larger one there that has 42 units. But again, they're all three stories across the entire site. We do have some garage parking, the longer bands here that you see. We have approximately 70 parking spaces located in those garages. We have four of those on the site. With this kind of development comes along parking. So we have the garage parking. We also have surface parking to accommodate the individual buildings. And then throughout the site, we also have some on-street parking, parallel parking, again, to bring that village aesthetic into the space, for a total of 450 parking spaces across the entire development. That works out to a ratio of 1.67 parking spaces per unit. As we get into the heart here, you can see our clubhouse. Another objective that the planning board discussed with us was to make that more centralized amenity. One of the features that we wanted to provide here was to have that gathering spot on the site for residents. And we've located it in the center of the site here, again, to bring that sense of community. To the north of that, we have a larger open space, a village green, to open the space up in that center and allow people to gather in that location. In that spot, if you want to bring up Craig, he's got the next plan. It's a little hard to make out here, but the, there are wetlands on the site, and we're planning to preserve approximately .6 acres. So there's one acre wetland in the heart of the site here. We'll be preserving .6, which means we're diserving approximately .4 for the development. But what we'll do is keep the portion of wetlands here along the north side. So the Curtis Avenue residents here on the top of the sheet, we're maintaining that wetland along that property line. And that's within a 50-foot landscape buffer that we're planning between our development and southern property lines of those residents. That wetland would then be piped across our driveway here and parking into that open space. Smaller wetland area there, but the intent is to keep that as undisturbed through the village green space there, and then pipe it once again at the southern end across to the CSX rail line, which is along the bottom here, as it currently goes today. So that isn't represented on the rendering, but just to point out that we are preserving that northern wetland, and then as it comes through the site there as well. That's our updated clubhouse. The final form of that we'll get into as we go through the site plan review process. If you could go back to the rendering and finish up with that. So then just moving further east on our site towards Salina Street, again, we've positioned the buildings to provide more of a grid light hut for this, for the vehicular traffic, providing sidewalks for all of that pedestrian circulation. Another parking lot between two buildings here. And then as we approach Salina Street, we have one more parking lot. As we would exit the site here, we are looking at future commercial development that remains to be planned out in terms of building type, business, or parking. But we are reserving that, those two areas for that commercial development. All in all, the site is approximately 16 acres, it's about 15.58 acres. And the development from Genesee over to Salina will develop that entire area with those two commercial developments in the future.
Okay. Anything else? Covered it? Good? Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing to comment. I wanted to point out some items that are parameters for the speaking section. Please address your comments to the board and not to the applicant. This is not a question and answer session. We're actually here to get everybody's opinion, and we want everybody to have an opportunity to have their say. Please be respectful of the board, of each other, so that there's no issues. And per general public hearings, there'll be a timed limit, three minutes per speaker. We have a timer running, so be concise. And if you didn't sign in on the sign-up sheet at the door, please make sure that you did. When you come to the mic, state your name and your address, but the sign-up sheet helps us get the spelling of names correct for the minutes. So at that point, I'd like to open the meeting to whomever would like to speak first.
Well, you can leave the things. I think Michelle's gonna need the sheet.
She got the sheet. Oh. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm Kathy. I'm Kathy Lagal. I live at two Curtis Ave.
Okay.
I had a few concerns. First, well, first off, drainage and water, because in our backyards, at least at two and four Curtis Ave, and I believe in Mike's place, Ray's, on East Genesee Street, there is a water problem. I've lived there 47 years, and the backyard has always been wet throughout the summer. You know, it never dried up.
Okay.
So there is a water issue on at least three properties on the way.
Okay.
The other thing is, how many feet, I see they said 50 feet, from our property line and to the site? Does that mean 50 feet before they build the buildings?
No.
Or is it 50? Oh, it's not. So what does that?
It's further.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It doesn't explain it.
All right. I'm gonna allow Steve to answer that one, just because it'll save somebody.
Let me just point out here, so that space you're talking about is right here where we labeled it landscape buffer.
Is that an easement? Is that what they call that?
It's called a setback.
A setback.
Right. So your property line, or the Curtis Avenue residence, is this dark line here. So we're coming 50 feet off of that. Now, we do have structures. The garage parking is 50 feet from that line, but those are lower buildings. They're not the three-story buildings. The three-story buildings are further down here, so you go across the 50 feet, then the garage, then a drive aisle parking before you get to the building.
And it's the same on these Genesee Street property lines? Is it 50 feet over to?
Here? Yes. So Genesee Street here, so there's a setback right there.
A setback?
Yes.
It's all the, okay.
Correct.
And how high is the garage parking? And will there be lights shining?
So the garages haven't been designed yet, but a typical garage, we would say maybe 12 feet high. Consider it like one-story.
Like a residential garage height.
Right. And lights would be full cutoff, so we would not have light trespass across the property line. So lighting would be focused internal to the site.
Oh, in the planning, earlier plannings, you had pictures of what the buildings would look like. My question is, there was fencing, like a privacy fence along Curtis Ave, because I was looking at the building on my side. Will you be putting up a privacy fence? I'm concerned about people crossing into the yards as a cutway and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't think we've really gotten that far exactly yet in the site plan approval.
Well, I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
So it can be added.
Agreed. That's why you're here.
All right. Or, you know, because it makes a buffer for the suns.
Right.
I'm used to, we're all used to under having darkness and no lights, and you could see the sky and sharp campers. And now that's gone. And I'm used to, you know, we get deer and turkeys, believe it or not.
Sure.
Those animals are gonna be gone. Every, you know, that's the sad part.
I understand.
Maybe when I speak, whenever Noel speaks, I'll talk to you.
You may remember.
Okay. And can I come back up if I can?
Why not? At this point.
Oh, right now, I can't think of anything.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you very much. Who would like to be next?
My name's James Mitchell. I am a renter at 76 East Genesee Street with Tim Noble, also here on his behalf as well as mine.
I'm sorry, what was the address again?
76 East Genesee Street.
Okay. Thank you.
I also wanted to ask about the drainage, just because along where CSX is, we've had a lot of flooding there over the years. So I don't want, I'm thinking with the smaller wetlands portion and it being pumped to that CSX drain line, that it's gonna kind of overflow or overwork those drain lines than they're already trying to do, because last August, we were flooded with those CSX drain lines because of that really high rainstorm we got.
Right.
So I just don't, I'm thinking that that would exacerbate the situation and make it worse.
Okay. I'm not certain about the size, that it's actually smaller, but it's certainly something that we'll be looking at. That's one of our biggies.
Yeah, my, that was my concern was like the potential, because we just re-landscaped and tried to fix the drainage, just so we don't want to have to try it again.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hi.
My name is Sally. I live on Mechanic Street.
What's your last name, Sally?
Sally is sufficient.
Okay. What's the address at Mechanic?
Mechanic is sufficient.
Okay.
So my concern is, I have several, but the biggest is that it used to be a foundry. And the foundry was one of the largest polluted, or the most polluted areas in the United States at one point. It was remediated in the 90s. We, you know, we've come a long way in terms of remediation since the 90s. I don't think anything further was done since the 90s. And I'm wondering, are they digging over the remediation? Was the remediation more than just a little concrete and some soil? It was one of the most polluted places in America. Do we want that unleashed? Are they digging on that site?
Steve, do you want to speak to that? I'm breaking my own rules here, but, which I really shouldn't do.
Well, we will be digging, yes, for building foundations, road profiles, grading throughout the site. So there will be earthwork done on site.
So the pollutants will not be, will no longer be contained?
That part of it, I don't, I don't know the level of remediation done below grade.
Right. We're still early stages in those kind of things.
I'm just puzzled why we're picking colors and facades, and we don't know if the ground is suitable for the digging.
We are choosing colors and facades. We're still on site plan.
Yeah, I can give a little extra information on that. So the remediation that was done before, you know, was a variety of things, including soil removal, you know, they dropped wells, that kind of thing. But for residential development, we're required by state law to meet residential soil contamination levels. So we're regulated, highly regulated by the D E C when building in a site like this. So we're locked in to meeting residential soil standards.
Okay.
And the wetlands in the middle of the property, is that being maintained as a wetland as per, you know, wildlife uses it? Or is it just a watering dump? Because how do you keep the pollutants from the driveways, the parking lots, from getting into that wetland?
Steve?
So, I mean, the wetland's gonna be maintained in its present, so the wetland in that area, in the central area there, would be maintained in its present form to the highest degree possible. And the, you know, one of the purposes of wetlands is to, is to deal with, you know, that sort of thing. Now, the wetlands would then be, would be a pipe, so it would store the water. The idea is it slows the water down, sort of talked to the last comment about the CSX line. So the wetland serves as a way to store water, slow water down. And then the pipe, a pipe would be placed to then take the water eventually, just as it does now, down to the CSX line and be discharged there. So that's how you manage sort of that, lock that line between protecting the backyards on Curtis Road, and then also making sure that the water's discharged at the correct, the current rate to the CSX line.
That wasn't really, I was more concerned with how you keep pollutants there on the parking lot than getting into that area.
So if I can, we're in the process of redoing their drainage study, and we just had B today, they've got to modify some things. But the New York State D E C has strict regulations on the conveyance of stormwater to facilities that are designed specifically to treat pollutants and before their release. So they're, they're in the process of working on their stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we did an initial review, and they just gotta fine-tune it at least some more before they're looking forward. But there's strict D E C requirements that we'll make sure that they adhere to.
Yeah, and I guess the direct answer too is the parking lots won't be discharged at the wetland. There's underground pipes that'll take them off property in some way.
My third question is, what does this bring to the people who live in Baldwin'sville now?
That's a question, not a, a concern.
My concern is, I don't see this bringing anything beneficial to the people who live in Baldwin'sville now.
Well, I think there are many ways to look at that. I mean, you.
It's market value, so most of the people who live in the village now won't be moving into those apartments.
But we also have an opportunity with people coming into the area. We have.
But what does that do for us?
It's gonna broaden your tax base.
Okay. Because it's not like we haven't had things built, and the tax, the school taxes especially still keep going.
You have the option, you have the option of increasing business within the village, which is, which is important. We have so many businesses that are trying to make ends meet. I think that's a benefit. Think of what could happen in that site if it's built up as an industrial site, and you maybe have 20 tractor trailers a day going in and out of there. That'd be very good either.
We couldn't have a grocery store. We don't have one on this side of town.
Well, I, you know, that's, that's something that we can't control. We can't, we can't find a grocery store that wants to go there.
You asked me, you know, what I meant.
Yes.
And I'm saying, to me, this erodes the community aspect of the village. It makes it a bedroom community. I've lived in bedroom communities. They're highly unpleasant. They don't have a community cohesive nature. Just my opinion.
That's fine.
The other thing is, like, the traffic study that was done?
Yes.
I didn't see any mention of attendance records for those days at the schools.
Actually, the original one was done on Thursday before Easter Sunday, Easter holidays, so we had it redone.
Right. But I was wondering what the actual attendance records were for those days.
I don't know that.
Right. But that's what I mean.
It's in, the report is about this thing. We could probably get that information.
I did a quick scan. I didn't see any mention of.
It's like 300 pages.
598 according to the PDF.
Yes.
So I did a quick scan, but I'm saying I didn't see a mention of the attendance rates.
Okay.
So I think that would be.
We probably could get that information for you.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Going twice? Yay! Thank you.
Excuse me.
You really want the input, so it's like important to, it's important to stand up. That's fine.
Michael Bray, 100 East Genesee Street. I've lived there for 65 years. Now, my concern originally is a problem we've had in the village not for quite a while. I think you know what's coming. It's the traffic. It seems to me, and I know you're all younger than me, but.
Nope.
Wow, you'd be surprised.
Nope.
We're putting the cart before the horse on this deal. We want expansion. It's great for the village. We all understand that. But we have a traffic problem now, and we're gonna add more traffic to that. And I don't want to hear about traffic studies, because I live right on Route 31. And I live between the railroad tracks and Bud Light. I'm halfway there.
Okay.
So I see it every day. I can tell what time, what day it is by looking out my front window. It just seems like, well, I don't understand why the village doesn't put more pressure on the state to do something about it. Now, we had something in the plan years ago, but the state said, oh, no, we ran out of money. They can find money for everything else. They can find money for everything else. It's open to count. You know, but we can't, we can't take care of this problem. It, it just seems like we should, we should take care of the things, if, if we want to grow, we've got to make it livable for everybody.
Okay.
That, that would, that would make sense to me. Now, I know it's going to take years and it probably will never get done. So, I mean, it's. The other question I have is the in and out traffic to this project. One is on East Genesee Street. Do we know whereabouts on East Genesee Street?
Near Beano Supply.
So it's down at that end.
And the other one is out where the Barnes Dairy?
Yeah.
Used to be the beautiful property when we drive in.
I always thought, I always thought that land out there was polluted. As a child, I played out there. I played out there for many years. I'm surprised I'm still standing here right now. But I know that area really well.
Yeah.
You know, and it was a, it was a mess. And I'm telling you, now, they already cleared it out once for another project.
Yes.
That's not the same developer?
No.
Different.
Yes.
There's going to be seven?
It might be on number three at this point.
So there's going to be seven apartment buildings? And how many units again?
Two seventy.
Two seventy.
Two seventy. Hmm. That's quite a few cars, isn't it? I don't know. I don't.
One thing I would encourage is to, you know, move up to, I mean, you can go to the village board meetings and, and ask them, but you probably need to talk to the next level up of government to try and get something happening, you know, state senate.
Hey, what's her next meeting?
Ask her. She knows what all of it is. But I, I think, I think that's really the answer, is to, you know, take it, take it higher.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that. Can I use your name?
Why not? It won't get you anywhere.
Worth a try. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to speak next?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm on the block, living 90, 40, 70 C Street. And I just wondered, how much of this whole project could that be improved by the different entities that have to do that? Do they, do they know?
Zero.
Nothing has been approved yet.
So what we're looking at is nothing?
Well, that's what, I think that's why we're here, looking, we're here to assess, so, yeah.
No decisions have been made. We're, we're still in the early process of working through site plans and options and seeker and, you know, we have a way to go.
Purpose of this meeting was to go over.
The purpose of the meeting was to get public input.
Input on whether or not they want the project to go through?
Or, or yes, or how we could make it better, how we could, you know, it's, it's purely to get the public's opinion.
Yeah. Well, it's difficult for me, my wife, actually be here and talk for whatever reasons, but. And I guess, I, I don't understand the whole thing. I don't understand. There's not a problem with them putting it in as far as we're concerned. I mean, a problem, but nothing that can be done. Something's going to go bad. You know, we all know that.
Yes, eventually something will.
Right, so we want the lesser evils, I guess. So I, I would just like to, are we going to be able to have another meeting or is this it? Why do they have a meeting today? I know what you're saying, but what is it for? What is, the purpose is to be informed about what's going to happen, what it's going to look like?
Right, and, and to hear your comments and your thoughts, whether it be for or against the project, and take that under advisement as we move forward in the process.
Well, we'll see about it. You know, the decisions are going to be made and then we're going to see the results, however it works out. It's not easy to know.
Well, I, I know you come to all of the meetings and I would encourage you to continue to do so.
And I have a lot of questions, but it's, not now. I talk a lot with my hands, I notice.
I think that's common.
So, so they have, they're going to have another meeting, you think, further on down the line when they have more information?
Yeah, I think the village board will have a public hearing as well.
Correct.
After we refer to them with whatever recommendations we make based on the process.
So have there been a lot of meetings on this project from the village, village board, just the village board?
I think they've only been there one time. Is that right?
We had that joint meeting. We had a meeting, then we had a joint meeting.
Yeah, and that's it.
It's referred to this body, and when you're done with it, it comes back to the village board because it then becomes a law.
Right.
And there will be a public hearing and input on that process.
Yeah, I tried to explain that, that whole thing at the beginning because it's, it's complicated and, and, you know, not generally straight line.
It's really discouraging that there aren't a lot of them.
I'm surprised, quite honestly.
I thought that they were going to be here. Well, okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. My name is James Page. I'm at 45 Salina Street. So I just had a couple of quick questions. I know it's all in the early process and we're still trying to figure everything out. But on the Salina side, it, it's not really quite rendered properly as, as to how the property is.
Okay.
We actually, my wife, her parents' house is right there where it says future commercial development. So, I mean, I don't understand, like, where's, where's her house? Where's her property? And how's that road going to come in? And if it is coming in right there, that's actually leading on to the bridge surface right there. So we're right on the other side of that bridge. And it's already tough trying to get out of our driveway. So just kind of figuring, trying to figure out where that line is. Because it, it shows a property line, but it's not showing the trains, and it's not showing any of the properties on the Salina Street side. So do we, are we going to have a, another run, run through this?
The train, the rail line, the C S X line is, is the longest path.
Correct.
So the bridge starts somewhere about here, here, you know, that subsequent construction.
Actually, you know, see, that's what I'm saying. It's not. The bridge actually shows, the bridge right here, let me show you. This is where the bridge starts, it's like right about here.
Yeah.
And this is my property right here. Okay, so my driveway's right here. And if you're not careful, you lose your bumper coming out of my driveway. So I'm just wondering, like, this isn't drawn properly. Like, so my wife's property that we're, in the process right now, her parents passed away, so. It's like a little triangle piece right here, and there's an easement, like a, a railway. So we actually have to come along the bridge to get into that property. So I'm not sure, yeah. So where's the bridge surface?
Is that the property that's kind of a little bit down, down by?
Okay, so if you have, if you have an entrance coming in right here, how are we going to still be able to access the property? That's what I'm.
So you're saying your property is between that entrance and, and the rail line?
It's right here.
So it's kind of, it's kind of hidden by the bridge?
They never gave, my in-laws never gave a railway to the train company. So their property actually comes right down to the tracks. We are on the other side of the tracks. We have an easement. The first side doesn't, so they need an accessible.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to figure that out, how we're going to still get in there.
Are you guys at this property here?
Forty-nine. Forty-nine.
So this property here?
That's it. That's all. I just wanted to know about that.
No, that's, no, that's fine.
So will there be updates on that as far as how we're going to work that in?
Yep, you know, we're, we're still in sight by our group.
Thank you.
We have a lot to work out yet.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Page, P H E, like page in a book.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What do you say is forty-nine?
Five.
Forty, his lot is forty-five.
But I think forty-nine is it, yeah.
Forty-nine is his two.
Yeah, I think so.
He told us that forty-five.
His is forty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Yes, you, did you remember what you wanted to say? Yay!
I think that happens all the time. Yes. The traffic, okay. The way it's coming out on Salina and, and west east on C Street, I can see people only turning left because they won't be able to cross over traffic. And what am I trying to say? Wait a minute. I'm thinking, Curtis is going to be a cutoff. It's going to be a thoroughfare because it's easier for people to go out and make right-hand turns to get in. As opposed to crossing over down Salina Street where they have to cross over, which I come out of Curtis and I have a hard time because you can't see the cars coming up until they're over at the top of the hill. So it's a very, I just keep seeing accidents are going to happen because they do come up there and come down the hill very fast and there's Curtis Ave. So I'm thinking they're going to be using Curtis Ave as a cut through. Going this way, but then they wouldn't, oh, yeah, to get into town.
It's sort of like making a lot of cross traffic.
They're going to use the roundabout, or use, I'm afraid of the traffic on Curtis. And, and, and it will be a lot more traffic. And they're using it now more so than they ever did to cut over to get to 370. So the traffic used to be null. Now it's very different.
So if you came out of the development and turned right and went up Curtis, you'd still have to turn left across two lanes of traffic.
Yeah.
It's kind of the same thing.
Well, to get into town, you wouldn't, you'd be turning right.
Yeah.
You know, you can't get into the other lane.
Well, you go through the development and out, because the development dumps out onto Salina too.
Yeah.
So, so you just turn right?
Yeah, you turn right if you wanted to go into town, and you're not going with the flow of traffic on the same side. You don't have to cut over on the street, you know, on the other side of the street.
Right.
Yeah, so the traffic will be crazy there too. And most of the time at, as you know, dinnertime, in the morning for buses, all that, the traffic can be lined up coming into Bevo from the top of the hill and Budweiser coming down. And that's terrible for the Oneida Street when that goes into East Genesee Street.
There's only that 10-minute backup while the buses go through and then it clears. I, I live on a busy street as well and the, the light, the cars be backed up in front of my house for about two to three turns of the light and then they're gone. It's, you know, bus traffic is a.
But you also have that new development coming in on Pine Street and 60 Road. There's a lot more cars there.
That actually is not happening.
Oh.
So.
That has been next?
Yes.
Well, anyways, the traffic, and to be on record, we don't want it, but, yeah.
Thank you. I'm glad you had a chance to remember what you were trying to say. So anybody else who would like to come forward and speak? Anybody? Okay.
I just, I did have one more question.
Sure.
Just as far as like the train tracks, are we going to be doing something about, right now it's a problem, obviously, you know, with like the young adults, or whatever you want to call them, teenagers congregating underneath the bridge and currently playing in all the buildings out there. But we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of more kids probably living in these apartments. And that, I've, I've seen dogs get decapitated on those tracks. And it's dangerous down there, and you can't get back up the hill. So are we doing anything about like barricading that off from this development? Because we're right on the opposite side of that.
Yeah.
And I've had to, I've had to tell kids, you're not coming up through here.
Right.
Because if I tell them, oh, you know what, it's okay, then they'll be doing it again and again.
Yeah.
And we've actually had the Baldwinsville Police Department ask us to tell us when they're playing and congregating under there. Because we've had problems with graffiti and everything else. So I was just wondering if, if something was going to be done about keeping, you know, them from being, being able to go down in there.
Okay, well, definitely something to talk about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Pardon? My name is Elliot Mistle. I was just curious of if there's decisions made on, on the blend of uses. So, you know, affordable housing, you know, has it been decided on how much affordable housing with the blend is with market housing?
Brody, you want to speak to that? And I'm sorry, what was your address, sir?
I live on Connell. I'm just a couple of blocks away from the.
Connell Terrace. Thank you.
So there's an option. Anyone who builds apartments in non-Dakota County has an option to go to the I D A and include a 10% affordable housing mix and have certain tax benefits that would proceed from that. I can't say whether the I D A would grant us that or not. That's way down the road. But that is the vehicle under, you know, current, you know, I D A policy, where they incentivize affordable housing in certain situations.
So that's, the, the plan is to apply for, is it a minimum 10%? Or, so is that what the plan is to apply for the 10% tax credit? Or is it, you know, is it more?
No, no, it's not 10% tax credit. It's if you have 10% of your units, affordable housing, there is a tax credit available.
Does that tax credit go up the higher the percentage of affordable housing is?
No, no. So that's the current county policy. We need, we can't even think about applying for any of that until we have our local approvals. So that's, the decision to do that is pretty far down the line, but.
Right, but I think, you know, I've seen a lot of postings online. It seems like, you know, a major concern of the community is, is the low-income aspect of it. So it's like, that, that's part of this process, you know, getting approval and then saying that you're going to get, you know, or try to get that incentive is, you know.
Yeah, actually, I should correct. It's called workforce housing, not affordable housing.
Just to clarify, affordable housing and Section 8 are two different things, in case everybody isn't aware of that. They're, they're not looking at Section 8 housing. They're looking at workforce housing.
Yeah, I should, I should correct it. Yeah, workforce housing.
It's a relatively new concept.
As the county I D A defines it, is a certain percentage of the, the HUD puts out household incomes.
Right.
So what, what county I D A is trying to incentivize is workforce housing. So it is, and they float it, but it's a certain percentage income based on the metro area. It's not Section 8 housing, like people who are destitute. It's people who are employed and, and, you know, and at a certain level.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I had a quick follow-up.
May I get your pardon?
I said I had a quick follow-up.
Okay. Okay.
Every time I've come to, I've been to all the meetings and every time I've just heard them say it's gonna be 100% market value.
That's not really the case, Sally.
It's not?
They've talked about workforce, work, workforce, workforce housing, you know.
So it's not.
And as we say, none of that's decided because they can't apply for anything yet.
Right. Just saying the words that I've heard being used were its own market value. I can go back to the videos.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody's looking at me, most people are looking away. Okay. Does the board have any additional questions at this point?
Not questions, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, sharing your opinions. That's important for me.
I agree, yeah, thank you, Chris.
Sally, you stole my thunder a little bit because I wanted to make sure to give a plug to our PACB partners. So if you're ever interested in our meetings, village board meetings, these are posted just a few days after the meeting, so it's a great resource.
Thank you, Chris.
Great point.
And I think we were gonna allow a few minutes for the applicant's attorney to do kind of an overview of the SEACER process. Which is that very long complicated form, right?
Yeah, so. My name is Brody Smith, thank you for giving me a little bit of time to talk to you about SEACER. So you have, in order to, the next step in this process is to complete the environmental assessment form. And that form is a tool that you use to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACER. So when I say EAF, talking about this three-part form, EAF and SEACER is the vehicle that you use to evaluate the potential impacts on the environment when you're, before you get to the next stage, where you look into the site plan review criteria. So one of the three parts, we prepared part one of the EAF. It's all background information and you've had that for quite some time. And that gives you statistics, percentages of how, you know, land would be used, how the construction would proceed, how many steep slopes there are, wetlands, that kind of thing. So that's all background information, that's part one and you have that. The second step is part two of the EAF, and that is an issue spotting exercise where you go through the 18 questions in the long form. And most of those questions are not relevant to this project. They never are to any project, it is a one-size-fits-all form. I think there's, depending on how you look at it, three to seven of those questions are gonna be relevant to you. And each of those questions, if you answer them yes, then you look at all those sub-questions. If any of them are, you determine any of the, answer to any of those sub-questions are moderate to large, then you go to part three and you determine whether any of those impacts have the potential to be a significant impact on the environment. And that's really your next task, is to make that determination of significance. If, looking at those sub-questions, the answers are no impact or only a small impact, then you don't even need to evaluate that particular issue in part three of the form. So Jamie asked me to go over a couple of the, you know, issues that have come up in the public hearing and then in our conversations with the engineer that would be worth considering and talking about. And, you know, I believe that this project, through cooperation with the village engineer and through careful revisions as a result of comments from this board, has been revised many times to mitigate environmental impacts, impacts on the neighborhood to the maximum extent possible. And so I believe that most of these, that all of these potential impacts have been, the designs have been adjusted in such a way to minimize them. And so, starting on question number three, impacts on surface water. One of the issues that has been raised in this particular project is the existence of about 1 acre of wetlands. The project has been specifically designed to not disturb the maximum amount of wetlands. So less than .4 acres of wetlands would actually be disturbed. And so that's something that we get an Army Corps permit to do and well along that process. And that is, as long as you disturb less than half an acre, that's called a nationwide permit and that's a permit that, you know, that takes care of that and allows for that. Now, where the wetlands are being preserved is in that central area. And the, if you look at the EAF workbook, specifically the question I'm looking at in your form is 3D, and it asks whether the proposed action may involve construction within a wetland. So they give examples in your SEACER workbook as to what are examples of large impacts, what are the examples of small impacts. Some examples of small impacts that the workbook provides is if the disturbance is less than acre, or .4. If the construction removes only a minor amount of vegetation, and that's true here, the majority of the wetland is gonna be preserved. And then it also, the workbook says you should consider if a SWIP will be used. And here there will be a stormwater pollution protection plan, one's already being drafted and shared with the village engineer. And the purpose of that plan is to minimize the effects of stormwater and to, and ultimately make sure that the current amount of stormwater leaving the site is the same as, you know, as it would be pre-development. So all of those things, when you look at the workbook, indicate to me that that would be a small or even no impact on the wetlands for the purposes of SEACER. If you look at flooding, question number five, I've confirmed that this is not, this property's not in a flood plain. So, you know, there would be no negative impacts in terms of flooding. And as we've heard a little bit through the back and forth with the public hearing, that the project is being designed in such a way to control the outflow of water so that water doesn't back up against the northern property line with Curtis and that it isn't discharged faster than it's discharged now so that we don't create problems with CSX. And so through careful design of the diameter of that outflow pipe and the contouring of that central area and the preservation of the existing wetland to store water, all those things I think are gonna create a situation that's maximally protective of the environment and of the neighbors. And those are things that our consultants and the village engineer have put a lot of thought into and have been very careful and purposeful about. The other question, if you look at our part one, we're within the distance, we're within half a mile of a listed structure. It's the Masonic home, it's on the corner of, it's on the corner, I'm sorry, it's on the corner of Genesee, across from the bridge, it's far away. It's not visible from the site and the site's not visible from that building. So there's really no impact from a ship-o architectural point of view. The bridge is listed, so we're within the, you know, half mile of the bridge. Again, can't see the bridge from there, the bridge can't see the apartment. So I just don't see ship-o type impacts for this site. It's not visually intrusive, any listed building. Traffic, the traffic study includes the installation by the developer of an additional light at 31 and Oneida. And actually, when they run, when the expert runs the numbers, it actually improves the traffic situation post-installation of that light. I think people have mentioned in this meeting that that's a problematic corner. So I know, I know that traffic is an issue in this village and we don't pretend that it isn't. But I think on balance, this project will improve the situation, not make it worse. And I, and I think, you know, that's one thing that we can do without the state, right? Where you have development in the village and that development is required to make improvements. You don't have to wait on the state DOT for that, that's something that you can do to improve your own situation. And I think this project improves the situation. And I think those are the main questions I wanted to hit. I stand ready to answer any questions you have that came up in your review of the EAF or anything that comes to mind after hearing me talk about these issues. But, you know, I think all these, all these questions through careful engineering and design indicate no small impact with regards to your view of part two.
I just wanted to say for the board, and this, it may sound like Brody's talking about some, you know, things you don't really understand or you're not used to, but this is a type-one action and you remember that we had talked about that early on. We do have the EAF in hand, I'll send another copy around if anyone does not have it in their email, easily accessible. The next step is that Greg and I will review and give recommendations to the board about these things that, you know, Brody has said. We don't take his word for it, but we make our own determinations, talk to the chair. And then we will, you know, send our recommendations and there'll be further discussion about the SEACER. But I, thank you, Brody, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Developers' standpoint. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Jim, second.
Sandy.
Sandy. All in favor? Aye, oppose? unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming in, we do appreciate the input and I wish more people had shown up, actually.
Mike?
I have nothing to do.
Get off, Mike!
Well, you didn't cover it around, did you, Mike?
Yeah, surprise, surprise. I assume they really will be done. If they, you know what I mean? Because they have to cut down, but it's not gonna be the same one, it'll be a pile.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's okay.
And if it does, my land is there, my land is there.
So that's part of what we're looking at in the train, yes? That it doesn't, doesn't go that way.
Exactly, that's great with that one. That breaks, John, to make sure that the water flows the right way.
It only runs downhill, we know that.
Yes.
Yeah, well, fortunately, we're a little lower than that.
Yeah.
Most of the retention's gonna be controlled and under. And there's actually more than two spots, there are like six areas that water.
Yeah, there is more than here.
Yes, you're correct, there are two.
Okay, so I'd like to bring things back to order if I can and move on to old business. Folks, I'm Ben.
Long time no see, it was only last night.
I'm not as advanced, I don't have the computer screens for everyone. So I'll start off by showing what everyone did not like. That reminder of what we get and what we do like. So, sorry.
Thank you, dear.
Not used to it. Everyone. So, the old building with the large garage doors, everyone did not like. So we'll get rid of that right now and we'll show you. So we've been to the architectural review board twice since our last meeting. They had a special meeting to help accommodate us and get us along our way so we can hopefully start construction very soon. So as you'll see, I'll turn this a little bit so everyone on the board can see. So as you requested, there's now two garage doors. They're stepped, so the garage door closest to the entrance will be stepped back. There's a one-foot step between the doors. As part of it, we had to grow the building by 12 feet in order to get two garage doors to work instead of one, you have to add two feet in between each so that way there's room for all of the equipment. So it was a minor impact to the site, but it's really pretty much the same layout from a site plan aspect. And then.
Forward, and that one is back. Sorry, Ben, I'm trying to.
I've got floor plans as well that I can point to.
It's, it's hard, Ben. Sorry.
No problem.
I'm trying to, let everyone see one by one, there's a lot of space.
So the garage doors are stepped, there's lights added to each side of the garage door. And we also added the windows to the garage doors as requested. And you can notice on the front elevation, there were comments about it being bland, so the stepping added, not an architect. the stepping added, I'm not an architect, but I believe it's the gable end, so it's a double gable end above the garage doors now. So, and then for the 24-unit building, it was requested to remove the coupholus and the dormers by the architectural review board. They didn't think it brought anything to the building, and it was, they didn't feel it was an appropriate scale, so we had removed those from the 24-unit building as they requested. They approved the elevations last night with three conditions. One was that the garage door color be provided, because obviously it depends on which manufacturer Joe goes with when he's going to build this, so that will be brought to them and approved prior to it. Another condition was that the light fixtures on the garages be black, which will meet the site lighting, and that the roofs are the same color as the existing building.
(inaudible)
So I guess I'll open it up to the board if you have any additional questions or comments.
I definitely like the finishes, I mean, they could even in a black and white copy.
Yeah, we're sharing one, big change, positive changes. This, this color, did you, do you have the samples? Do we have them? Where?
Sample, the material sample?
Oh, I don't know.
Would love to see those, yeah.
So, I will let you know that there aren't samples of every product, unfortunately. He wasn't able to get the stone in in time, so there's colored photos of that, and the shaker, he also did not have, but we got the siding and the capstone above the stone, he had extra of...
And the PVC railings are white, the windows are white.
Yes.
Thanks, Michelle. Welcome, somebody.
And I also noticed they put windows at the end, and it's to make it a little bit more, not, you know, not as totally bland and huge and...
Yes, I don't, so the last time, I don't think there were any windows.
No, there were not.
Gone to a lot of board meetings about this, so we had four since the last time.
Siding, this is obviously the sopin, this goes underneath the gable at the entry.
Yes.
This is part of the stone.
That's the capstone, so the transition between the stone and the side.
Not representative of the blend, but...
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Much better.
Much better. Thank you, I was counting the way here.
Is it November 7th submission just architectural? Is it what's here? Has I not seen this before?
That's EAFs.
Oh, that's the wrong one, please, this one, okay. Yeah, November 7th, right?
So we've submitted to the planning board and the architectural review board updated site plans and architectural elevations.
Is there, oh, I'm sorry, I'm seeing this for the first time tonight. Do you have a list of every change, like...
I did not provide one that I could write that...
That would be quick, that would be helpful.
I was just going to ask, what was updated on the site plan?
So between the last planning board meeting and this one, you're ignoring the architecture?
Two, two things. From the original?
Yeah.
Just, maybe just one, you know, from the original to now, right?
So the original approved PDD back in 2017 until now?
Right, but I think there was an interim change as well, that we approved, wasn't there? Or, we've, we've never gotten that far, we've just been working on it for a couple years.
No, we've never gotten that far.
Okay, yes.
Almost, but...
Yes, in words, and, and since this is the update, we'll just stick with this one, like, here was the 17, here's now.
Okay.
Something, something simple for a simple-minded lawyer.
Okay. Anybody have any additional comments?
I like what they've done, it's much better than what the earlier version was.
We gave a lot of feedback, and we had a lot of those notes, we tried to, the last week, but, the windows, the stone, all of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moving forward, I think we have to refer it back to the village board, correct?
Well, we need, at our, we need to look at this and make sure we're good with it all, it, again, it just came, it may have been submitted, but it just didn't get to everybody. And we need to, we moved our meeting earlier, it was supposed to be next week, but we moved it to this week, so that's why we haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
We need to address the PDD.
Say that again.
We need to address the PDD.
Right, right, the whole thing, and then we can, then we can refer it out.
Okay.
Back, back to village board.
What was the deadline that the village board gave?
Did they give us a deadline?
I thought they gave...
To finish instructions.
Thursday's going to be a problem. Was it first of the year? I don't recall, Ben, I...
I truthfully wasn't at the meetings.
Okay.
I know they were construction...
It was short, but I don't...
They gave you a deadline?
Gave them.
To finish the project? I'd have to check with...
I'm sure we can...
Yeah, there was something, they gave an extension for...
Right, right.
It was, it was something, I can't remember what.
I don't recall when, I'm actually not even sure I knew when it needed to be under construction by.
I do know that came up, yeah.
Or if there was a completion, it was mentioned like...
Probably like, probably would have been something like six months, and it's probably getting there.
Yeah.
For sure.
But if this hit, if it's not approved, it's kind of difficult to finish it, right?
Or...
Hopefully we can get it finished.
It's better to not build it and then get approval later.
Exactly, exactly, so we'll, we'll work with the village board, right?
We hope so.
They'll work with us as well, I'm sure.
We're waiting for your recommendations on what, how to modify the PDD.
Right, that's what Jamie was trying to get at, yeah.
James, once we have that, this has got to be a public hearing, because we're modifying the PDD.
Right.
So the earliest the board could have accepted it, if you were ready to act tonight, would have been first meeting in December, so now we'll be pushing back. And I know Joe would like to put shovels in the ground as soon as he can, especially with the weather's been bizarre, but, then again, he could have done it two years ago. So...
From, I could be completely wrong, but is there a way that the village board could schedule a public hearing, knowing that comments will be coming from the planning board ahead of that December meeting, so, is that possible or no?
What's the second meeting in, in December, is there one?
14 days after the first one. Like December 5th and December 19th, or something like that, sometime.
So ours is what, the 17th?
I would have to check, I would have to check with our attorneys to whether we can schedule a public hearing pending, it's just a thought, I don't, just trying to keep things moving, but definitely.
The board, the planning board meets the 17th, the village board meets the 19th.
And I know your associate, Mr. Trasher, suggested he could go into the codes office and get pending building permits, you know, started based upon potential approvals.
Start to review of the block buildings.
So that, I mean, so if it was all proved on whatever night by you guys and then by the village board, he could roll in the next morning and start digging. That would be the goal. Yes, that's, that's the developer's goal, I guess.
Again, so if you can get the list, I'd like to circulate it to the board members, so they can, can really pinpoint...
Thank you.
...the changes without too much effort, and we'll try, you know, try to accommodate if, if this board is agreeable that the changes are incorrect.
We could come ready to approve or not approve at the next meeting.
Or, or if we have, we have time to look at it before the next meeting, then, you know, we can circulate a proposed, you know, document for people to look at.
My apologies, are there colored renderings or just the samples, just so I know the finishes? I'm not trying to create work, okay? Just wondering.
But they're called out on these plans?
On the elevations. Except we couldn't find, no, we did find 23 eventually.
Yeah, it was very small.
Yeah, they're, they're key to the elevation. Okay, so, get us the info, everybody will do their homework.
That's right.
We'll see what we can do for the next meeting, which is the 17th, because we moved it up, because the scheduled meeting was on Christmas season, that probably wasn't popular.
Yeah.
I mean, I would have come, but...
(laughing)
Okay.
I'm a good captain.
Thank you, Ben. And at this point, we've taken care of the new business, which was Mr. Mills and his lotline adjustment, so I'd like to have a motion to close the meeting, please, at 7:08:22.
How many motions, Chris?
Chris?
Seconded, Johanna.
Johanna, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Unanimous, Michelle. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Nice job, everybody.